All right, folks. It's 6:30, so we're going to get this show on the road. I'm going to hit this once for the one and only time. There you go, that's it. So my name is Steve De Angelis, and I'd like to welcome you to this public meeting on the Reedfield Fairgrounds. You should have an agenda that I'll run down through with you. Also, on the back of the agenda is a small version of the proposal, and there are large versions up there. It'll also wind up on this screen on occasion. I don't know exactly when, but sometime. So we'll start out with, I'm going to give a little history of the makeup and the process of view so far. Jerry will then do a presentation of the working group's proposal and the concept they have so far. We've got brief comments from representatives of each of the committees that are represented on the working group, public comments for as long as it takes, and then future steps, including the town warrant vote. So, as I said, I'd like to start it off just a brief history of what got us to this point. And so I think we're, it all started after, of course, after the town voted last June to turn down the proposal that was presented then. And there are a number of folks who believe that there could be a path forward for a more scaled-down proposal that could be funded almost entirely through grants and local labor. One of the issues from the last time was that the members of the town's committees were not an integral part of the development of the project, and the town as a whole was not brought into the process sufficiently. So when we talked about how to start, it seemed logical to us to start with the town committees. They're all filled with folks who have a certain passion about serving the town and interest and expertise in their fields. So we asked each of the town committees, the rec committee, the conservation committee, the trails committee, age-friendly cemetery, select board, and the historical society to select members to serve on the group that we called the Fairgrounds Working Group that was tasked with finding common ground about our fairgrounds proposal among those folks. And Jerry and I, Jerry Bly and I, were asked to be the, what they call the process leaders in that, which means we didn't participate in making decisions, we just led the process. All of the committees that I mentioned, except the historical society-selected representatives. And after, what I would describe as a hard first meeting, and what that was, was the airing of grievances and concerns from the process that happened last, before the last vote. And I remember coming home from that meeting and telling my wife Tara, I was like, "Oh, I don't know what I got myself into. That was a bad idea." It just seemed really, you know, there was a lot of hard feelings about people not being included. And, but I have to say, the working group completely left their disagreements behind them and proceeded from that point with honesty, a willingness to listen, and a real determination to make something work for as many people in the town as possible. After about 10 hours of meetings, I didn't keep track exactly, roughly 10, the group reached consensus on the proposal we'll put before you tonight for public comment. And consensus means that we did not vote on anything that we decided to present. We reached consensus, which means that everybody in the group, before we could move forward on anything, had to either agree with what we talked about, or at least say that you could live with it. If even one person couldn't live with it, we had to go back and work harder. And we had to do that more than once. It was hard, but I think it was a really effective way of working. In reaching consensus on what you have in front of you, I am absolutely sure that there is no one person on the working group who got exactly what they had hoped for when we started. Consensus requires compromise, and everyone on the committee got multiple chances to state their case and listen to others make theirs. The proposal that you see is one that they felt did the best job of balancing the fiscal needs of the town and included the most critical aspects of a plan that would meet the desires of a variety of town residents at this time. Tonight, we're going to welcome your comments and encourage you to remember that we are all in this together as we try to balance many divergent needs and opinions. Jerry will talk a little bit more about this, but we are early in the process. The planning will go on as long as it needs to in order to get things right. The article that's on the ballot in June says exactly this. It's Article 11. Shall the town vote to pursue the development of an expanded multi-use recreational field area at the fairgrounds property, consistent with the town's fairground management plan, with any final project plans coming before the voters for approval, and with the project construction to be funded exclusively by federal, state, and private grant sources and donations which the town is hereby authorized to apply for, accept, and expend? So what you're voting on is whether or not you want to move forward with developing the proposal, not a particular proposal. We, the working group doesn't really even have an exact date, so we want our proposal ready by this. We all said we want to have a proposal ready when it's ready, and then we'll vote on that. So there's also a little explanation of the fairgrounds working group on there, but that's the article, what I just read. So Jerry, I think, is going to go to the second part where present the ideas so far that we developed. Oh, you need to be mobile.
All right. Good evening. I'm Jerry Bly. As Steve mentioned, I'm, along with Steve, a co-process leader of the working group. And just, I want to start by giving a real tribute to all those that have been involved. It's been, you know, I think, a positive experience for us. So as Steve mentioned, our goal was to, at a minimum, meet the needs for a girls' softball field in town. The rec committee has spoken quite clearly and strongly that there is such a need and demonstrated that to our working group, and that to date, they have been having to patch things together in order to accommodate the girls' softball needs. And whereas there's an existing baseball field at the fairgrounds, there is not a similar facility available for girls. And to do so in a manner that is consistent with the fairgrounds' management plan, I'll talk a little bit more about that, and to do so without public funding. So our initial efforts, which is sort of guided by the fairgrounds' management plan, focused on whether there was any reasonable alternatives to constructing a girls' softball field at the fairgrounds' property. The group explored options of making improvements of the ball field that currently exists at Reedfield Elementary School, and also looked at trying to schedule league use of the existing softball fields at the Miranda Cook Community School. In the end, both options proved infeasible, and the tension shifted to shift to creating a softball field at the fairgrounds' property near Church Road. We then brought in Regina Leonard, landscape architect and park planner, who had done some of the previous work for the town to help us develop the concept plan that I will be sharing with you tonight. So.
Bill, can you show that plan on the Zoom?
That's not it.
Yeah, that first.
That one, well, I'm looking at this one, I'm like, hmm, now I might slip.
The first page. Nope, other page. There you go. Perfect. Okay. Okay. So I'm going to walk you through the key pieces of that. First and foremost, the creation. So this is the, just to orient you, Church Road over here, where the current parking lot is, so this is redesigned and expanded, this existing ball field. So what's proposed is adding a softball field at grade level with the current ball field there. And by putting it at grade level there, it creates the opportunity to use those fields for other sports, such as soccer. That shows up over here on this plan over here, as well as to use for community events. So the fences come down, the fence of the current ball field come down, and then we create a large open area here that could be used for Heritage Days, Halloween, and other town events. The proposed plan keeps a portion of the existing meadow here, which is where the current trails run down here and around, and maintains those for habitat, for education, I'll talk a little bit more about that, for trails, and includes a new universally accessible, meaning accessible to people of all abilities, loop right here that would provide an opportunity for wheelchair accessibility and other accessibility, and that along that trail, there would be pollinator plantings and educational signs associated with that. The Conservation Commission, you'll hear a little bit more about, has spoken strongly about some of the values here. As you can see from this, about two-thirds of the area under the current proposal is developed either for parking and/or fields and developed recreation, and about a third of the fields remain here. The proposal maintains the existing walking trail system, which is very popular with walkers, runners, dog walkers, families, and others. So the existing trail system would be not greatly impacted. It's changed a little bit in certain locations, but essentially remains intact. The parking area will be redesigned to get rid of the middle aisle, so it would be a single roundabout there. It would also be expanded to the south to add about 10 spaces to the current capacity. And the committee also is supportive of potentially paving the parking lot and lining it, because what we find is that without that, you have very inefficient use of the parking area, reduce capacity substantially, just because people are not parking in accordance with lines, and therefore you have a lot of unused space. We've also talked about, for special events, such as Heritage Days and things like that, organizing a system of satellite lots at the meeting house in town, potentially even across the street, water district lands there, so that there can be safe parking without people parking on the street. And separately, but somewhat interconnected, is the proposal to build a sidewalk on the Church Road, which would allow safe pedestrian access from those satellite lots to the Another point to make is the inclusion of some sort of barrier that can be used if necessary at times to discourage uses, unwanted uses of the parking lot. There's been some issues with neighbors in the area about use of the area after hours and whatnot, so that will be built in to the proposal as well. We've proposed providing electricity and water up to the field area that would be used both for maintenance of the fields, possibly also tapped into by the cemetery, which needs water, as well as for use for public events. And then lastly, a piece of our proposal that doesn't show up here, but is working with neighboring landowners, particularly the RSU, but possibly others, to improve some meadow habitat elsewhere because of the lost habitat that's been resulting from the proposed development here. So, so those are the major components. They all fit into a consensus vision of the working group, and let me just read that to you here, that to create a concept plan for the Church Road Fields Area of the fairgrounds' property intended to provide a balance between an area managed for sporting facilities and community events, and open meadows for habitat, scenic beauty, education, and low-impact outdoor recreation like walking. The plan aims to increase the accessibility of the area to people of all ages and abilities, and part of the parking lot improvements will include handicap parking spaces and easily access from those spaces to accessibility. The trail to the field will be an accessible trail as well, and I mentioned that pollinator loop trail would also be designed for full accessibility. And the working group recognizes that the fairgrounds is one of several interconnected public lands in the village area of Reedfield, including the Miranda Cook School property and the town beach, which should be viewed together to maximize the public benefits that they can offer. So some facilities may be better located at the fairgrounds, other facilities may be better located elsewhere. The working group understands that there's a stated need for additional recreational facilities, most notably a basketball court, to be appropriately sited in the village area. We get that, we've heard that. There are a number of options for that, including but not limited to the fairgrounds. And it's our groups, we have not tackled that issue, but we would, if asked, we would tackle that issue with the same sort of research and discussion that has been done to date to cite the softball field. So now I'm going to allow one representative from each of the committees that has been represented on the working group to say a few words regarding their committee's interest. For those committees that had two representatives, I would ask that you introduce your fellow committee representative when you speak. And I'd like to start with Hannah, if she is here, to be followed by Andy Walsh.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the RAP Department Committee Association, whatever you want to call it. Greg Lambach was the second representative on this committee. Yeah, I'm just going to take a deep breath. So the meeting that Steve spoke of, where we all sat around the table and got to air our grievances, I know I've heard people say it would be nice if everyone could be involved. It's hard to have everybody involved when the stakeholder people who are, want the most, and care, I won't say care, but have most invested in this, can't get along or come to an agreement. So being able to air those grievances, and there were some things I said in that meeting that people who had listened to me for eight months straight said, "I never heard you say that before. I didn't understand that." So that meeting was very helpful. Having all of us be able to come around the table and keep working forward on this project, I think is hugely important to understand the needs. Obviously, Adam Woodford's over here, he was on the rec committee, all these guys over here are on the rec committee with me. I think since every, but every one of them was on the rec committee 78 years ago, we've been talking about how to fix a softball field. And it's due time that we figure out how to give the girls a nice softball field in this town, as nice as the baseball field. So that's the biggest focus for the rec department. I was super passionate about a basketball court, and so I did air something in one of the last things to say, can we at least keep this somewhere in the discussion? So that's also part of the eventual plan. But what I really want people to understand is the question that is on the ballot is to simply say that we agree that this space can be developed, and that we will not use town funds, tax dollars, to do it, that we will apply for our alfond grant, we will privately fund the other half, we will work hard to do that, and also involve everybody in the final plan decision and vote. So I just want everyone to understand that tonight. That's what we're working towards.
Andy?
Good evening. My name's Andy Walsh, and I'm a member of the Reedfield Conservation Commission, and along with Greg Durgan is representing the commission on the working group. There's a number of other Conservation Commission people here as well. So, basically, we, our job is to oversee, role I should say, is oversee four properties, conservation properties in town. You're probably familiar with most of them, Torsey Pond, Fog Property, the Town Forest, and the Fairgrounds' property here. So at the Fairgrounds' property, our focus is on the fields primarily, and we have managed those fields for their natural resource and scenic values, and we do that through annual mowing. And, I don't know, two or three years ago, we wrote up a mowing plan that called for late-season mowing on or after October 1st, and so we pretty much, I think that was the case even before the mowing plan, but we pretty much stick to that, and the reason being that we, through that late-season mowing, it allows the plants to go through their full growing season, wildflowers to bloom, provide nectar sources, and basically milkweed, which is critical to monarch butterfly, by the way, which you may know is in somewhat dire straits these days, and because of the low numbers. So that's another target of our management on the fairgrounds and the fields. Concerning our participation in the working group, we were following, as Jerry said, the fairgrounds' management guidelines. We felt that they provided a balanced approach for assessing any sort of development on the property. And being the Conservation Commission, we were, you know, naturally advocating for the fields, not that we were ignoring any of the other values there. But we, we wanted to hopefully see as much of the field acreage be conserved. Having said that, Steve De Angelis and others did some useful research during the process to determine that whether or not there were other options to building a field on the fairgrounds, and Hannah provided useful input in terms of the challenging struggles as far as getting games scheduled, given the current number of fields that are available. And so with that information, we were pretty much convinced that the fairgrounds was the place that a second ball field would be needed. And so I believe everybody on the commission was pretty much on board with that, and so we certainly support the development of the second ball field. Let's see. Also, as part of the working group process, we advocated for a few things, one being a pollinator garden, and it's kind of near the corner of the parking lot, near the current entranceway. We thought it would be a useful feature to kind of engage people to come and plant native plants and help promote the awareness of native plantings for native wildlife. And, you know, something for residents to kind of get together and kind of share a common interest. The other thing was the interpretive trail that Jerry mentioned. We view that as kind of an educational tool to increase awareness for pollinators, and also the monarch butterfly, again, among virtually anybody, young and old. And so that was another amenity that we were advocating for. So in summary, the commission feels that through the working group process, we've come to a pretty, we feel successful conclusion here in producing this concept plan that I think will provide a lot of value to the town's residents.
Up at the podium.
Oh, you do want to be on the.
Yeah, I want to be.
Okay, then grab, then grab the mic. Sorry. Just pull.
There you go.
Hello. So I am Elaine Katz, and I am the representative from the Age Friendly Committee. And so my focus has primarily been accessibility, and I want to emphasize accessibility for all ages. The emphasis being on all, young, middle age, older, anybody who, for whom accessibility is a major concern. So as Jerry already alluded to, some of the focal points that I just want to highlight is that there will be designated ADA handicapped accessible parking spots, and they will be, the proposal will have actually two areas for that. One area of handicapped accessible parking spots will be in this area, because it lends itself nicely to access to the pollinator garden, where we anticipate there will be benches and signage, and of course, accessible walking paths. And then the other thing that hasn't been mentioned yet is that it would be nice to have bathrooms, but right now we are focusing on more elaborate porta-potties. So these would be certainly handicapped accessible, not the small ones, but larger size with some more amenities. So this would be the other area where there would be handicapped accessible parking. And as far as the rest of the proposal goes, it's important that there be accessible walkways all the way down to the ball fields, where we already have low stands for people to sit in, and there is actually also, for emergency purposes, there actually is going to be a service road over here, which again, is important for people, young people, all age, to have that kind of access. So that's what's been the focus of the Age Friendly Committee.
Rob, Trails?
I'm Rob Peel, I'm chair of the Trails Committee, and I want to recognize a couple of our members that have served on this work group. One is Steve Hayes, who is not here, and Jackie Drewan, who is now on the committee as well. Go ahead, wave your hand. Okay. And I also want to make sure everybody knows that there is a very nice trail system on the fairgrounds' property that extends a lot further than that drawing you see over there. It extends down to Route 17, near the road into the fairground subdivision. It extends onto the Miranda Cook property down near the superintendent's office, and we hope someday that, well, assuming the sidewalk gets built up to the fairgrounds, that we will be able to link out to, down to the library and the community pathway around the Union Meeting House, then out toward the mill stream area, and from there, connecting up toward Nickerson Hill through the Ross Maron Kennebec Land Trust property, and ultimately out to the town farm. Some of that will be on roads, of course. So the other thing I wanted to say is when the Trails Committee found out about this proposal, we had basically five objectives we wanted to see. And one was that we maintain and enhance the existing trails on the fairground, that we want to maintain things in a way that we can establish additional connections beyond the fairgrounds' property. We wanted the Trails Committee to be kept informed of development proposals for this property, and we wanted that any proposed development should include design, construction, and funding for any trail alterations or relocations. funding for any trail alterations or relocations. And we wanted the existing trail through the memorial area to remain where it is. That's an area that's basically south of the parking lot before you get into the woods. Yeah, down in that area. And that, that's, our objectives have pretty much been met very well, I would say. We've had a number of meetings where people have commented on designs and continued to improve them, and Regina Leonard has done a great job of addressing our concerns. So, that's basically what I've got to say.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
I will be short and brief. I am a member of the Cemetery Committee, and Andy Tolman asked me to be at these diverse meetings. I am not particularly knowledgeable, but I've learned a lot. The meetings have been interesting. I don't have children in the school system, so my interest is equality for both girls and boys. I'm for that. The girls have a place, the boys should have that. And for the, representing the Cemetery Committee, I hope I'm not the next one there, but, but we have an interest in the conservation of the resources, as has been mentioned before. The meadows to be saved for pollinators. I know for some of you, it's not your favorite subject, but it is a concern. And the concern for the Cemetery Committee also is that nothing changes the nature of that area. The tranquility, that there are plants and there are pollinators in our area as well. So, there hasn't been anything that has done anything negative at all. In fact, my ears pricked up when it was mentioned that water would be a nice thing for kids to have, and adults, at the Fairgrounds area. And the Cemetery Committee, for some years, has talked about, we need water, we can't be carrying water every time, we need to water some of these plants, and our gardens that are emerging in that area too. So, that is my part, that's all I really have to say. I think being part of this group was a little bit intimidating because I felt I didn't have quite the expertise, but I have the passion for plants, people, pollinator, and whatever else there might be. So, and I will end by saying, these discussions among diverse interests, for sure, have been really productive and certainly very thought-provoking, and I think we have come up with a really worthwhile plan to be voted on, to be thought about. Thank you. Bye.
So, I've been asked to just briefly comment on the Select Board. We were part of the process also. I, myself, was not. As I already mentioned, Jerry and I were non-deciders in this. We were just process leaders, facilitators, really. Right? But Dennis Price and Sean Keegan served as Select Board reps. And I guess the, the thing that I noticed the most was that you wouldn't have known that they were Select Board reps in general. They played a pretty low-key role. And I would say that the majority of the process was driven by the committee representatives. And we were happy with that. That's the way we wanted it to be. All we got to say? Pretty brief. Next thing? We're ready to go? All right. So, the rest of the meeting, folks, is going to be dedicated to public comment. And just a couple of things before we get started. When you, when you want to comment, please, I'm going to ask you to step to the microphone and the podium and state your name. And the microphone is important because we want the people who are joining us on Zoom to be able to hear well as also, okay, to hear what you have to say. And please state your name when you, when you come to the mic. Jerry's going to be recording the gist of our comments on the flip chart as you speak, both for your reference and for ours as we, as we move forward. Dennis Price is over there monitoring the Zoom chat, and so, you'll just let me know when you got a question from, from there, right?
Yes.
Okay. And as far as comments go, there is no time limit on comments. You are asked to simply just, you know, say what you want to say. And what I would encourage you to do is if someone else has said exactly what you're going to say, you could go to the mic and say, "I agree with so-and-so," you know, instead of like repeating it all. Or if there's, maybe they, they said a certain thing, and you say, "Well, not only do I agree with that, I also have this aspect of it," or maybe something to add to that, whatever. But, you know, try to make the comments as, to the point and brief as you can, but there is no time limit. Okay? When you're ready to go, I'm tempted to say, I guess it's easiest to raise your hands since there's not a big long line snaking up to the mic. If you want to do that, just raise your hand when you're ready, we'll call in and get you up there.
And when somebody does want to reiterate something that somebody else has said, I'll put some check marks up next to that comment, so that won't be lost.
All right. I'm retired from teaching now, okay? And this is eerily reminiscent of what happens when I say, "Would anybody like to comment?" Okay? In a classroom. So, I know that there's people out there who want to say something. So, so, how about Carol, and then Adam? Carol, you were, I saw you first, so, Carol, do you want to do that? And then, Adam, you will go next?
My name is Carol Doran-Boss. I'm currently a member of the Reed Field Select Board. I just have a lot of questions. First of all, I know that early on, when we were just considering the softball field, there was a challenge to say, where else in town might we put this softball field so we don't have to do this to the Fairgrounds? And with a lot of gusto, it sounded like other alternative locations were looked at, including the village, and looking at the elementary school, and looking at the use of the high school, and that didn't pan out because of certain things. So, I'd like to ask the group if there was equal gusto in looking at other areas where a pollinator garden might be located. So, when this first started, let me back up a minute. When the, the project first got started, it started as a softball field. And in general, once the schools are closed, the kids in town don't have a whole lot of places to go. We don't have a good playground. My daughter used to get rust marks on her jacket, a dedicated jacket for the swing set down at the beach. You almost needed a tetanus shot to use that set of swing sets. And so, that's really gone. We had designated playgrounds all over the area that we could go to. But once the schools close, there's not a lot to do. So, I'm glad to have the softball field there. But the second thing that was asked for was a basketball court. There's fabulous athletes. We've been gifted to have tremendous athletes come out of Marana Cook. We also have kids that will never play basketball because they don't have a basketball court on their driveway, but they can, they can go to a local basketball court and try it. And maybe it's a passion, and maybe it's somebody that's going to be phenomenal, but they need a place to play. The comprehensive plan has just been unveiled, and I've been going through that a lot. And it said we have adequate room in this town because we have more than 10% dedicated to nature and open space and trails and things of that nature. In fact, we have exactly 12% of our town is already protected as open space or trails or conservation, including eight cemeteries. So, that's 12% of the acreage in this town is already protected. We're just asking for a small little piece for the kids. And I believe the Fairgrounds whole area is 30-some acres, and we were just asking for five simple acres for the kids, and maybe mowed grass where they could, you know, throw balls and do somersaults and ride bikes. And then, the plight of the butterflies came up, and I was really kind of caught off guard with that. But it seemed like everybody was all in at having all of it fit there. And that's why the people that were really passionate about the basketball didn't speak up. It's like, okay, you know, we can probably share this as long as it all fit there. So, there's just a lot of stuff that, that's being added in here. It talked about a pollinator meadow. And then, it's talking about a pollinator garden with little signs of specimens and, and trails, and not like a meadow where it's mowed and it's very low maintenance. That doesn't sound low maintenance to me. And so, it's, it seems like another place where trails or conservation, or those people are going to have an additional, pretty intensive place that needs some attention. It was just open pollinator fields that can just be mowed over. Okay. This sounds very elaborate, more almost like an arboretum, which, there's a really nice one in Augusta. And the, the thing with kids and things for kids to do, and the difference between adults and kids being able to do stuff, is kids can't drive. Kids can walk, kids can ride their bikes. Most adults can, can go almost anywhere for whatever form of enjoyment that they want. And the kids, my daughter Yavi, everybody's like, she's the one that walks all, all the time up and down the sidewalk in town, because that's what they do. They have to walk. There was accessibility for handicapped, and I know a family asked specifically for the reason to be able to get grandpa from the parking lot down to the ball field. So, I'm glad that that's also part of the handicap accessibility, is to get them down to the ballpark. You guys use the words, or in the plan, the words "buffer" to buffer the ball fields. What, what does that mean? That term, what is that referring to?
I think, Carol, right now, we're going to do comments, record those, and we'll address those questions, but we feel like it's most important to hear from as many people in the audience.
I, I understand, and I'm not done, Steve.
I know, I'm not trying to cut you off. I just said rather than answer your question right now.
I, I have questions, and that's one of them.
You can continue to ask them, I just, we're going to record them. I just thought you were waiting for an answer.
I, I am. Just can somebody tell me what the word "buffer" means, went with? So, if you look at the diagram over there, surrounding the softball field and the access to the baseball field are a whole bunch of bushes, shrubs, shade trees, and that's called a buffer. And, and I think the planning board is using that word also for new businesses in town. They need to buffer the new business that they may not be in, in light of having, with a buffer meaning a fence or a hedge row to hide the business that they think is not attractive. I think the comprehensive plan also said 60% of our town is over the age of 60. It's just fabulous. We love our senior citizens. I hope we're taking good care of them. We also have to attract young families. If we don't have things for kids to do in this town, we're not going to attract those young families that need to come to Reed Field, go into our school system. We're competing with Sydney and Gardner and Manchester and a whole lot of other towns for these young families. And they, a thriving area like the Fairgrounds, where they can see kids playing and families hanging out, instead of hiding them with, with shrubs and bushes and trees, I just, I don't get the idea. So, it also seems like, I think there was $2,700 spent on a landscape architect. And are all of those little circles, the green circles on the plan, actual trees and shrubs that we're going to purchase? Anybody? That's a lot of trees and shrubs.
Andy, go for it.
My tape on the thing, that's showing the vegetation. There might be a few rampings in there, but what you see, the kind of ring vegetation, I think that's all it's a stage.
Okay.
As far as the buffers concerned, I think they get a buffer around, you know, the woods that exist there now.
Okay.
Maybe it's a visually kind of buffer, and maybe a little sound buffer in front of the neighbors.
Okay. So, my point is, it started out with a softball field, a basketball court, and, okay, some, some gardening, some gardens, some pollinators, nature. And I was just really disturbed that the basketball court was taken off the plan. And that's where it became an issue, because there's plenty of room there, it seems. That nice circle right by the baseball and softball field is the optimum place for a basketball court. It is right next to where the families and the kids are going to be playing, where a mom that has a softball or baseball player to keep an eye on someone on the basketball court. Also, close to parking, they were throwing the basketball court way up in the marsh to the, to the top left, close to the road, which I don't think is an optimum place. But then, there was talk of electric and water. I don't, I don't know that we want lighting there. I think the Butters are interested in, you know, minimizing noise there, that once the sun goes down, the fairground should be closed. So, I don't know if electrical was just for, was lighting, or just access to plug things in, maybe? Is that it? And, and moms for softball or anything else are pretty good at pack and carry, like, they bring in water and stacks and everything else. They didn't need a lot. So, like, the addition of water seems like a really large cost as well. Is that, and digging a well would be the thing that's required? Which I don't know the cost of that. But it's, so, we started really simple, with really simple needs, and it just kind of got away into a very large dollar amount project, which got voted down last time. My last question is, so, if funds are coming in, are certain things going to recreation? Are they going to be shared between recreation and pollinators? If people say, "I want the recreation," and that's where I want, if I make a donation, to go to that? And if I want a basketball court, I want my money to go to that? I, I guess I'm asking, can we put the basketball court back? It seems a whole lot of that map, all the light green spaces, are pollinators. And it, right up the, the trail from that baseball field is a giant meadow.
If you look there, sure, I can.
I can, I think she's talking over there. No? So, I think, I believe if the trail stays on this place, it's like, just right here. You go up a little and find, there's a giant meadow. It's just there. And I think many disrupted butterflies or pollinators would fly their way there. And another place that maybe would be optimal is by the high school. You drive down there, there's a lot of parking, people walk that sidewalk. That would be where someone might go and look at the signs. I guess I'm curious, a basketball court, I think, would be widely used. Pollinator gardens, I don't, I don't know if that's going to get the public, you know, getting there with as much frequency as a basketball court.
So, Carol, what you just pointed to is where you want the basketball court, right? That's what Bruce asked. Where, where you want the basketball court?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what he asked. Okay.
This is a little bit high. Softball's right there, baseball's right there, parking's right there. They were putting it up here in a marshy area, right next to church road. I don't think the kids are going to be playing basketball by their own without parents. They should be right next to the road. But right here, mom could be hanging out at either of these fields, and their basketball player is right there in sight. And you have still all of this area for pollinators, or this big giant meadow up there. I'm just saying, you know, do the people here even, do you buy pollinators in your, your own yard? I mean, everybody can do their own thing. So, I just don't want to reduce what we're going to offer to the kids, and the kids that may not have a lot of options, when we've got enough space for everybody to share.
Can you, I just have this from the Zoom. Can you use the microphone if you want to?
Yeah. Okay. Thanks so much. I think that's enough.
Carol? Carol, are you all set then?
I think. And the memorial features? There was just some wording that I didn't know what that is.
Those are the benches and the, and the few trees that have been planted in memory of other people that are right by the trails, just off to the right side of where the parking lot is now.
Okay. I'm just thinking, the basketball court is maybe the size of this room, and it seems like it should fit somewhere in those five acres. Um, and if we all share, nobody gets slighted. But it's, it took a turn for the worse when I was zooming during a meeting, and it was just kind of glossed over about the baseball field and the pollinator garden. I said, whoa, back up, did you just omit the base, basketball court? And they said, yep, it's not in the plan. And I went on a tirade for a while, like, you can't, you can't do that. That was the original plan. We've got, um.
Carol, I'm, I'm going to, I mean, you said that a couple times already, and I really want to give other people a chance to comment. So I'm just going to encourage you to, unless there's something new.
There is something new. The court had $1,000 donated by Cash McClure, our own Maranico graduate, who was Mr. Maine Basketball. Out of all the basketball players in the state of Maine, Cash McClure, a Maranico grad, was awarded $1,000 by Gatorade, which he donated to the rec department in hopes that um, that basketball court would be real. And we were calling it Cass's Court. And so that's, um, again, something else we would like to see, um, representing somebody in our own area that, um, was very successful.
Thank you, Carol. Adam, I think you are next, right, bud?
So, Adam Woodford, uh, 493 Main Street. Uh, I love that idea. I love the fact that all the different committees got together and decided on something that would make Reed Field better. I had four daughters that played softball. Every time we went to the field, it's hard to tell your little kids that they feel valued. And especially in a town with Reed Field that people are doing pretty well. And the, the ball fields were never, never taken care of. And we had always checked to see, like, whose responsibility is to, to have it taken care of? And there was always crickets. Um, when I was on the rec committee, having a softball field was going to be a great idea. All I care about is that more space is opened up for the public. I think for, um, I ju- I just think that's a great idea with everybody that can be proud of one site. If everyone's proud of it, they're going to take care of it better. And I also think that just the fact that this is, can be just stage one of all the other wishes Carol has, very passionate, love that. But it doesn't all have to be in one space. It can be spread out throughout Reed Field. Reed Field's very big. And I would love to see more inclusion with the Trails Committee, which sounded awesome. I, I would love to see that dream come true. I'd also like to see maybe the upgrading of uh, some of the trails that are in the school district. Just because those are, there's definitely a difference between the love of the Trails and Reed Field and going out onto the Trails at Maranico. So just thank you, and I hope it goes forward.
Thank you, Adam. Bob?
My name is Bob Matar. And uh, just a brief thing, uh, last year I was, I was, I questioned a bunch of things about the ball field. I've changed my mind. I'm very much in favor of a softball field, and I feel that it's going to be a valuable addition. The changes in this, this, that this committee has brought are thoughtful and good. Uh, one thing that I'm reminded of by Carol's statements during the bus, she speaks about basketball, but more than basketball, she says something that is very important, at least to me. It, it highlighted my own ignorance about things, and I had to be reminded often by my wife. Carol spoke about the mothers who are there and, and would like to watch their children. As a guy, I, I don't think in those terms. And she's absolutely right. I, I thought about that and thought about how it's very important for young families, especially where a mother, especially in this society, where you have single mothers who now have burdens of their own and, and fathers who are single, who have to monitor all of this stuff and take their children. These are, these are great burdens. I think it is important that, that Carol's perspective, that they, that we introduce and look for a small space. It doesn't have to be something that, that dominates, but some small space that provides uh, the peace and uh, for women, especially mothers, younger mothers, and thank goodness there are so many. And that's wonderful. So that's basically all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Other folks? Dennis, anybody on the chat at Zoom so far?
No, there, uh, there have been just a couple of questions that, that was answered. Is there a space at the be- at Beach for pickleball? And currently, I said currently, there is no pickleball facility down there. But that's it, that's the only question.
Do you want to attribute that to a person or just put it up?
Um, sure, I would say maybe to honor the, the question. Yeah, absolutely. Um, is there a space for, at the beach for pickleball?
Do you have a name associated with that or?
It just says Jim. Sorry?
Dennis, can I? I'm just.
Please?
Carol, can you go to the mic to do that?
Yeah. There are a lot of folks who are talking about hearing, so I, I, I.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say.
Okay, you bring it a portamone.
I know you can convert tennis courts into pickleball. You do that at the test club? Oh. I'm just gonna, so you can convert tennis courts into pickleball courts. We already have three tennis courts at the high school, so maybe for the summer, we can convert one very easily and inexpensively that can be dedicated to that without creating another space.
Currently, there's none. That's why it's a question.
Dave, you look like you're in line for the mic.
Sure.
Okay.
Dave Linton, uh, couple things. Last gentleman spoke about, well, I've heard a couple comments made about maintenance of the grass and the grounds down there. When that was originally built, um, a lot of us all got together, for one, built that field. Then I got the fence done, and I got the lawnmower donated, and I donated the lumber for the shed. And then my wife used to go down there on her own time and mow that field all summer long. So the answer is, when you drive by, as a community, whose responsibility is it? It's yours. Take it upon yourselves to get things done. And as far as the pollinator garden, I'm not against pollinator gardens, but we've got 2,500 acres of public land in Reed Field. Can't we have a place that's for recreation? Why, why, I don't, why do we have to put everybody's little thing into every square foot of everywhere we are? Can't we have a recreation area and we can have a pollinator garden somewhere else? I mean, there's 2,500 acres, people. I don't, I don't think it's going to be the end of the world. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, we're going back.
I just have an administrative announcement. Cookies.
Okay. I guess that doesn't matter for the folks on Zoom. I was going to make you go to the mic, but.
And, uh, folks are missing.
Okay. Um, well, while you're waiting for someone else who might want to talk, we did get a letter that, um, this person asked to be read to the group and read into the record, so I'm going to read that while we wait. This is from Jennifer Sparta, uh, 35 Men of You Drive in Reed Field. Um, I respectfully submit this correspondence in support of development of the Reed Field Fairgrounds. I have been a resident of Reed Field for more than 11 years. I have two children, currently nine and six years of age. And while I hope my family will be able to enjoy a more developed and comprehensive fairground area, my support of this development is not just for my family. The benefits to our community are plentiful and include, but are certainly not limited to an increase in property values, the sense of community, and potential revenue. Public parks are essential to a thriving community. One of the functions of a town is to provide opportunities for people to spend time together in recreation and community fun. Bringing people together, providing safe spaces for children to play and gather, will not only enhance the lives of those families, it will significantly increase the quality of life for our town. Without growth and development, our town will become stagnant. We have an opportunity to create a space where our citizens can gather, to socialize, exercise, and support our local schools and sports teams. Feeling connected to one another and part of a larger community is even more important now. To do anything other than grow and develop this area is quite frankly irresponsible and short-sighted. As a community member, property owner, and parent, this is of the utmost importance to me, and I'm willing to help in any way so our community can reach its potential. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard, Jennifer Sparta.
There are a couple folks on here. I'm going to get this mic because people can't hear me. So I'm going to take this.
You just took it apart.
There we go.
Check, check, check. All right. Uh, so we have a couple comments, one from Tom Labrie, uh, that says, "The best part of the ball fields in Manchester is that they also have a playground for the younger kids, hoping we can do something similar at the fairgrounds." And Christine Poulain wrote, "My concern is the after-hours usage by kids old enough to drive, but not old enough to go to the bar." Uh, and her last thought is, "There have been issues."
Thank you, Dennis.
So on that note, I'll go right into Christine's. So.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. It just said, uh, the, the concern is after-hours usage.
After-hours usage.
Christine Poulain, right?
Christine Poulain, sorry. Sorry. The name, yes.
So I have a list of my bullet points. I'll go right off.
Bullet points, I like that.
Right off of what Christine mentioned, I'll come forward and be the anonymous police caller. I am the one that calls the police on the teenage drinking and driving and reckless drivers that are partying in the fairgrounds. Back on November 10th, 2022, when we called, the sheriff dispatch was like, well, you know, we got to consider the season and sunset and kind of talk back to us. When the police officer got there, they actually searched the minor's vehicle, had all the doors open, trunks open, and bottles on the hood. These reckless children are leaving that playground or that parking lot and now driving under the influence. Now, my problem with this is, we have voiced our concern to Eric and Dennis, which has never been brought to your committee. You guys only became aware of it when I attended the first meeting. And that was very disappointing because I look at Dennis and I look at Eric as the middleman to make sure the proper people get the information and the concerns that have to do with their committees and their departments. And so that was a really big letdown to find out that none of you had heard about our concerns of these underage drinking, drugging, and reckless drivers. So that was just piggybacking off Christine. Expenses, so we're saying to get grants and fundraising. So there are fees and tax dollars involved with that because we're hiring grant writers. And there is a fund or budget, I don't know how much, for grant writing and planning. So there is money involved in just with your valid question of, can we do this with grants and fundraising? That's the build. But getting to that point, there are still tax dollars going towards it. And right now, the budget for Beach, Rec Board, the Trails, and Heritage Day all equal just under $50,000 a year. How is that going to increase when the proposed sidewalk comes into effect and we expand this ball field and the maintenance that's going to be required? I love that David mentioned that our community jumps in, we volunteer, and we do that maintenance. Love that, because that's what we should be doing. Instead of our tax dollars, everybody who wants to use these fields, everybody contribute. But it's not a free thing. Everything's not free. Oh, free grant money? It's not free. There is maintenance that comes up afterwards. There's talk about putting water in so that also the cemetery can get it. Well, there are eight cemeteries. So now that this one on Church Road gets water, do we have seven more we need to provide water to? Just a concern. Um, and I, I've attended all the meetings that I've been allowed to attend or that I made, was made aware of for this committee. And I keep hearing phase one. This is phase one. We'll talk about the basketball court later. Well, also with the sidewalk meetings, we're talking about the sidewalk. You guys are campaigning why the sidewalk is necessary down Church Road. So that we have our rec center, our rec area where all the activities and sports happen. And that's why the sidewalk needs to be put in because it's the central. That's why it can't be at the elementary school, because it all needs to be clumped together. Well, phase one, then, if basketball's not going to be put here, but softball has to be put here, what's the whole campaign of clumping everything together, put the sidewalk here, because everything's going to be there? So it kind of bothers me that we're talking probably $500,000 to $700,000 again. Yes, grant and fundraising, but that's what it's going to cost in fundraising and grants. And it's not including a basketball court. And we're trying to make everything in one spot, but where else are you going to put basketball courts? And are we going to come back and tear down more of the natural land or whatever, the wetlands, put the basketball court by the road like it was last year planned or place-carded? Um, it's just, it's an incomplete plan, and there's a lot more to be discussed, not just, hey, do we have permission to go fundraising and get free grants, free money to build it? Can we, can we look at this? There are still funds to be considered to do this. And to piggyback on what Carol said, with the parents being able to see their children while they're doing one activity or the other, um, we experienced just something similar to that with the rec department at the fairgrounds during the Easter egg hunt this year. Our seven-year-old son, my husband went, they said he couldn't go with our two children, seven and eight years old, to help them egg hunt. That's fine. Well, they ran off and he couldn't keep track, he couldn't find them. After the egg hunt was done, he couldn't see the two little children because they went in different directions and the eggs were spread all over the fairgrounds and on the trails. So it's, it is important to be able to have areas that we can still kind of see all our different children. So just some points and thoughts and concerns I thought I would bring up.
Thank you. Thank you, Virginia.
Hi, I'm Amy Tarian. I'm a member of the committee. Um, first of all, Virginia, I'm sorry that happened at the egg hunt. Um, I actually took charge of that event, and that should not have happened. Nobody should have told you that you should not have had your husband following your kids. That wasn't a rule. I don't know where that mix-up was, but I apologize for that. Um, the other thing I just want to throw out, I have four young kids, they're 10 and under. Um, looking at the future of Reed Field, if we're talking about drugs and alcohol, it's statistically proven that kids that are involved in the extracurricular activities are less likely to be involved in those things. If there's one thing I know with the horrible opioid epidemic is that, um, it's happening a lot closer to home in the small towns where there's nothing to do. So if I'm going to do anything for my kids, it's put more options out there. I want them outside dribbling a basketball, riding their bike, going to the beach, and that's, that's where I'm at with that. So I hope you all really think about everything and think of the kids in the future, and we can get this thing going.
Ralphino, 52 Mountain View Lane. Uh, came to listen, but now I have to say something. It seems to me that one of the big sticking points as this process has evolved, now that we have finally gotten our act together and brought all the stakeholders together to come up with a plan, thank you for that, and we're making progress at long last. But the basketball court seems to be a sore point. And I am wondering whether in your development scheme, if down the road, there is a place for that court within the configuration of the development we're talking about now. If there isn't, I think we're going to have a problem. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cash Keppler. I'm not really one for public speaking, but I just wanted to get up here and say I agree with Carol and, what was your name, Virginia, and anyone else pretty much who said they're in favor of having a basketball court. I'm in college now, and it's even still hard for me to find basketball courts in the area to play, practice, work out. I gotta go all the way to Manchester or Augusta because I can't, it's really even hard to get into the high school or the middle school during the summer. So I know for young kids in the area who can't drive like me, it's even harder for them to be able to play basketball if they don't have a hoop outside, which not everyone does. So I just think it's really important to give kids and families that opportunity. And even like kids my age who still want to play basketball in this area to like have that opportunity, just to drive like down the road. So, thank you.
Thanks, Cash.
My name's Jeff Carlson. I'm part of the rec committee. I, I will have to say that I can understand that this entire process was frustrating, having as many groups in it. But I actually like what I'm seeing here. Do I want a basketball court? Yes. We were part, that was part of the original plan that we wanted out there. Is that forgotten? No. I volunteer a lot of time for the stuff that we do for the rec committee. Coach both my son's teams, or at least help coach them poorly.
Been there.
And also do a lot around the town with a lot of the events. Not always can I attend them. I would like to also point out, because I'll give you an example, talk about the town taking care of the field. Last night, as I was walking off the field at 8:00, after my son's game was done, somebody came down and started mowing the field at 8:00 at night. And I know that parent also coaches, also volunteers a lot of time. So the fact that we're doing this as a community is great. The rec committee, we also put a lot of time into coming up with ways to fundraise, generate. So the rec committee is not a cost. It is actually a benefit to the town and from a standpoint that all these things that we do are not free, but we also don't target making a significant amount of money on them. We want to just make sure that the kids are having a place to play and having a lot of fun. So I'm in complete support of ensuring that we have a basketball court. We've been working on just trying to get someplace for the girls to play so we don't have to send them to other towns. Because we just don't have the facilities here. So yeah, that's really, to the people who want the basketball court, that's not something that we're going to let slide away. It's just, this was the first phase. And that's why I work in tech. Everything is in phases and projects, and you always have to, you have to operate in that manner. So thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Jeff. After Lydia.
I'm Nancy Perkins, and I live on Morana Cook Lake. And my grand, I'm a grandmother. And I'll just show you a picture of Benjamin, our grandson, and Yevi Dornbos. It's the tall and the short of it. And they played unified basketball. And it was wonderful to watch. It's entirely different because there is only one rule, and the kids have a great time. And I really think we ought to support Cash with his donation for a basketball court. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Hi, I'm Marty Hannish, St. Ivan Hill Road. I'm not part of the fairgrounds planning group, but I did attend several meetings, partly because my wife is on the, on the, in that group. And at the beginning, it seemed like that might even get a little violent. And I wasn't there to protect her. I was there to protect other people. When I, when I, the first meeting I attended, very early in the process, I sat in the back just observing as a member of the budget committee, to be aware of what might be coming down the pike. I saw a lot of people sitting at the table with their arms folded across their chests, looking down at the table. And later on, I attended another meeting, and it was quite a different picture. There was a, one of those drawings out on the table, a very big drawing, and everybody was leaning over the table and pointing at things together. And so I understand that a lot of people would like to see a basketball court. I loved basketball years ago. I was a power forward. You can't see that today. But, but one thing I feel very strongly about, I've, I've heard some people speak, not tonight, but other people speak in a way that indicated that they're going to vote against this article in June because they're not getting everything they want, or because it includes things that they, that they don't want. And I think that that would be a real mistake. The town has gone through periods when it was accurately described as a fractured community. And I think that those people who are not 100% happy with this plan, I hope you still support the plan. Because we need to come out of this as a community that, that this is the way things are supposed to be done. That the stakeholders get together, they overcome their own parochial views, they look out for each others, look out for each other, that I can go along with that because I see so-and-so feel strongly about it. So that even if this plan does not really fully meet what you want, I hope that you'll support it anyway, in the confidence that things will come back later, and that we'll come out of this with something that is an overwhelming community support for the plan that, that you've been given.
Thanks, Marty. Did I see your hand up? In the back? Did I see your hand up? No, I did not. Okay. Is there anybody else? Greg and then, yeah, go for it. Is that what you were going to say? Really eat some cookies? Oh, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Oh, there you go. Cash, I know Joey can eat one of those boxes all by himself. Bring it to him.
Sean Roderick, I live at Forzarella Lane in Reed Field with my wife and 11-year-old and 12-year-old. And I always like to think about things of how we got here today. How are we here where we're at in this room today? We had a vote a year ago roughly. I was kind of surprised to get people don't like their taxes going up. There's a lot of things my taxes go for that I don't like, but you kind of sit back and let people spend your money, you be a voice, and then you kind of move on in life. But I always think you need to invest in, you know, our future generations, you know? You hear comments around town, too many bicycles in town. This is going to cost too many bikes. Well, when I see kids riding their bikes through town or to the library or to the ball field, I think it's the most wonderful thing. My kids think it's great. They don't understand why I don't let them ride down the main road to the ball fields, but that's a whole nother story. Is this plan everything I want? Some of the things in this plan blow my mind, that we can't have a basketball court, that we can't have a snack shack. I was at a practice tonight with my kid over at Ball Fields in a neighboring town. You could walk up and buy dinner while your kid's at practice. This is my third meeting tonight. My, I have kids everywhere. We can't even get our kids bussed to sporting events. It's, it's the fact. We had to get 51 kids by parents brought to their events. There probably would be more parents here tonight if they didn't have to drive their kids and wait for their kids till it was over to get other kids back. Is it going to cost us a little money? Yeah, it may. That's how, that's how life works. There's nothing free. Whether it's grants or not, is it going to cost a little money? Sure it is. But I think this is the way to go. Am I excited about all this plans? Am I excited that we have $50,000 a year on the warrant to buy more land for the town of Reed Field? No, I'm not. But I'm not going to fight that. So let's move forward because if it's not this plan, when is it ever gonna, when are we ever going to get there to provide something for our kids? When is it ever going to come? No plan is going to be perfect to everybody. This plan isn't perfect, but it's, it's a start. And we can work from there. My kids are now 11 and 12. They woke up last time and said, what the hell hap, my son said it, I'll never forget it. What the hell happened? Why aren't we going to have sports fields? Probably shouldn't have said that at 10, but that's what he said. If you know Austin, he's pretty honest. He's not shy. So that's what he said. And he said, Dad, are you going to go down there tonight? He said it to me a year ago. And I said, absolutely. You never stop in what you believe in. So is this perfect? No. Am I going to vote for it? Yes. So let's move on. Let's make something happen for our kids, and we can continue to work as a community to make it a better place to live and work. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Mr. Lineback.
Cookies. Anonymous donor. Just saying. So a couple of things. It occurred to me while I'm part of this working group. And, and I really, really am so happy to see so many younger people here. I've been waiting for this for like years. And I think it's important to recognize that somebody had the vision to set aside this space a long time ago. And we're kind of standing on their shoulders. And it's, it can be a transformative opportunity for this town. But we also need to understand the perspective. This is, this may be a very difficult thing for some folks that were involved in that to, you know, really, really get excited about because this may not be, have been part of that vision 20 or 30 years ago. But I really think this can be a really good opportunity. Obviously, we're going to transform the space, but this is an opportunity to sort of renew civic engagement. So we're not a fractured community. And it's really about how we engage each other and engage this together by listening to each other. This is also a great opportunity to maybe, maybe heal some of the public-private partnerships that we should have a much better relationship in this town, especially with the folks with the means to build this. What an opportunity that could be. Fundraising. Well, someone asked about why are we doing electrical and water? Well, if you put water in there and a little bit of electricity, boy, Heritage Days could really start to become something. And wouldn't it be great if folks from other towns come to pay for all this nice-to-have stuff? And literally, you know, back in the old New England days, every village had a commons. Well, this is, this could be our commons. And, and finally, for me, it's really a reflection of civic pride. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Young man. Introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, Sean Keegan, Sadie Dunroad. Sorry I wasn't here at the start of the meeting, but I was listening. And what I found cool to start off with was it took you guys 36 minutes to present this to everybody before we started listening to comments. And because it took so long for each member of every committee has been working hard to kind of talk this through. I too, I don't think it's the finished, perfect, best plan. But I, you know, I started volunteering in Reed Field for soccer. I have three kids. Not a one of them plays soccer. It's fantastic. They like, they like softball, baseball, basketball, and not soccer. It actually hurts my soul. And so, you know, I, I hope that every kid gets a chance to play the sport they love in a good space in this town. And so that's kind of where I think it's important. And I hope that people see the value in the work that's been done so far to this space and see that there's, it's, it's not the finished package, and we do have opportunities. And I hope on June 13th, we vote for this. So thank you.
Lydia.
So I'm Lydia Lineback, and I just had a thought. I'm just, and I know that there's no questions to be answered, but if this does get voted down, then what happens? Are we then with no softball field, with no possibility of basketball field, are we just, a basketball court? Obviously, my kids did not do basketball.
No basketball field?
And I'm not promoting an ice rink here. But, but what, what's going to happen? If we say no to this, are we saying no to any future development at that point? I would encourage people to look at this as an opportunity for growth because it's my understanding that if we do vote for this, we're not saying this is the plan that we're getting. This is, we're voting to say, yes, we want to look at what we can do. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Lydia. Any other questions, comments?
I got one more. Dave Linton again. I think the struggle seems to be that there's too many different ideas going on in the same spot. We got too many people with too many ideas. And people are voting it down for that reason. So why don't we go back maybe to this space? Because it's already started as a recreation spot for fields and courts, and leave that to the rec department? Because we've got all kinds of other land we can designate for other things and other spots. And then we don't have 12 different committees butting heads with each other. Hannah's got a great plan. The Alphonse Grants, get things going. Every year, we keep screwing around with meetings. It's another year we don't have a field. I'm a doer. I'm not a sit-in-a-meeting thing. I'm grab my tools and let's build it. So I think if we eliminate all the different angles, maybe we'd have some progress.
Rosalie.
Rosalie Kimble from 14 Church Road. And I wasn't planning on talking tonight, but I, I realized while I was listening to people that this could actually support the arts as well. You may not have thought of this angle, but I grew up in northern Maine, right outside of Prescott Isle, a little town called Easton, just right by the Canadian border. And we had a public school. We were allowed to go up and use the basketball courts. And my brother and I would go up and use the basketball courts or the tennis courts. And we weren't playing basketball or tennis. We were juggling and riding unicycles. And, and my brother has gone on, he's performed in Carnegie Hall, he's performed with the Boston Symphony Orchestra. So just another angle of, you know, what we might be creating here. Yeah.
Can I ask you if you perform with Carnegie Hall on a unicycle?
Juggling, playing, banging on a cardboard box. Yeah.
Just something. Had to know that answer.
Yeah. Yeah.
Did I see somebody else?
Hi, Leslie Marco. I live in Mount Vernon. I grew up in Manchester.
I know.
I, good to see you, Mr. Angeles. I live in Mount Vernon. My children went to Reed Field Elementary. I have helped with, I helped develop the playground in Manchester that was once Castle Town, made of wood, not what it's made of today. Nonetheless, kept Castle Town. I have helped to reshape and regroom the field here in Reed Field, whether it's at the elementary school, whether it's on Church Road. I used to run these streets before there were sidewalks, and the school would get called because we're in the road. We're running to a breast. We need to be running single file. And truth be told, we'd cut through those fairgrounds on our runs and get back out in the woods, hang out there jolally, which might not be a word, but jolally, until it was about the right time to come back from our run. And we'd get asked, princesses, did you go run? And we'd say, we sure did. So the point would be though, is things have developed, right? Castle Town's no longer made of wood. And there are sidewalks here in the center of town. I used to ride my bike down in the middle of 202, cross the street, my bike, get an ice cream, and then drive back across 202, back to my house with one hand and an ice cream in a, in a dish. And you know that, I would not do that today. In Route 202 in Manchester, where we live now, I would not do that because the cars are going way too fast and they've increased the number of lanes. But all for the right reasons. So the point would be is that I agree with any plan Hannah So the point would be, is that I agree with any plan Hannah has folded on a napkin in her pocket. I agree with any plan that puts kids in the community first to create something that starts something you haven't seen yet, that has potential that you, has yet to be realized. The idea of centralized community space that has good access for our community members of all age and all, all needs and requirements, so very important for folks who, my parents come to, all of my kids' sporting events come heck or high water, sorry, I won't use Austin's word, but it must be easy to get to, and when you do talk about an area that doesn't include a basketball court, you don't have to mow a basketball court, I will say, there are some tarred areas with basketball hoops in Manchester, and just this week, we asked out-of-town visitors not to hang on those hoops, because it does take everyone to tend to these spaces and allow folks to know, please don't hang on those hoops, that's not what they're for, you will break them, you know, this is important to us. It's also important to have an area, a basketball hoop and a basketball court, just to add to the space, allows lots of different people, that the fields and everything that are there are so important, and there's lots of things you can do with that space, but a basketball court, one hoop, one person and one ball, can do a lot, whether it's just for fitness, those people who are a bit more introverted, those folks who are out there just to get in some good, healthy activity, but can be by themselves, that also isn't running, you know, that isn't doing some of these other things. I think if you just, just think a little bit bigger about some of that, I think you guys will come up with a great plan, a plan I will help mow, rake, though I do not live here, but I still grew up here, and it still matters very much to me, and I'm getting to reintegrate myself with small children, I have three small children, 12, 10, and 10. And being able to be somewhere where they can also do, have some activities that you don't have to also be a part of, as well as those that you can be a part of, sometimes a mom just wants to sit, and talk to another parent, or a friend, or somebody else, or maybe even just meet somebody else, because their kids are there too, you know? So, I say all that to say, keep up the good work, please, don't let this go, Reedfield really can and should be considered the heart of our community for our school, and with different towns having different opportunities in collaboration to say, this is what we offer, and, and that's good, and we can offer something that's similar and different, really does tie us together and has us moving from town to town. So, thanks for just. Oh, and the kids are gonna go drink anywhere, by the way. I'm just saying, I live in Mount Vernon, and there's cans all downside of my road, and we pick them up, they're going to go anywhere, and so there can be a way that we try to prevent that with whatever you establish here, like we would up at the school in a parking lot, like we would in a church in a parking lot, we can try to get there, it can't, it shouldn't be a reason not to. But back to Amy's point, I can tell the people, that guy, because I don't know everybody's names, and that one, voice woman, you know, there's ways we can solve a lot of these things, try to peel the roadblocks back.
So, I forgot two more points, and I want it on your little brainstorming board as you guys plan. So, something I also mentioned to Dennis and Eric after the vote had gotten voted down last year, and I, I found out that it didn't get passed along either, was a portable softball mound, they've done it at other fields, nice fields, you can move the bases and move the mound, so it's the right height for softball, and you could double the baseball field as a softball field, you could still keep that soccer, that dreamed soccer field space, and you could fit the basketball court where the softball field is designed now, just an idea, because with the basketball court, like she had mentioned, a single child can just go play, they don't have to get a whole team to play softball, or baseball, or kickball, or soccer. They can go and shoot hoops and work on their three-point shots, do layups by themselves, they don't have to have a team, but also a single child playing out there entices a pickup game of other kids, hey, can I join in? So, you know, a ba, a basketball court would be used more year-round than a softball field that gets used five, six weeks a year, because that's how much a baseball field gets used during rec season, during this baseball season, that's what it's getting used, very few times, I have yet to see a pickup game except for Heritage Day when they do the kickball tournament. So, it's just, it's sad that the basketball court isn't in the plans, when basketball's something kids can do on their own, and I just wanted you to have it on your brainstorming list.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Dennis Price, I live on the P Ridge Road. The, it's, being a part of this process for quite a long time, I've watched a lot of the plans develop. One of the things that we did insist on with the softball field is that it is available for pretty much, the, the goal would be to have it be a multi-age-used facility. So the good news is, is that there would be a mound that could move back, especially with bases and things like that, so that age groups could all be accommodated through that, that one softball design, so that's, that's very important. And the reason that you see numerous soccer fields over there is that there are various age groups that those soccer fields relate to. So, I think the best part about this plan is it does guarantee multiple ages, and, and it's a legacy item. The other thing I would say about is, it's very, great to see all of these people here that care about this, and, and I echo everything. I, I don't have any children, I, I will never have children that play on any of these fields, but I think it's very important to continue to look towards the future, that the idea that there were so many stakeholders that were able to get together and come up with this plan is just, to me, a testament to not only how many people want to see this happen, but how you can lead a group to where you want to get to. So, I just want to say thank you to Jerry and Steve especially, for being a part of this sort of, we don't say leadership, but the process leaders for the, this meeting and this group, so, thank you.
Do you live in town, sir?
I do indeed. Hi, my name's Joey, and I was just gonna echo a few other people's things. Reedfield is the center of Maranacook, I mean, the high school and the middle school are both in Reedfield, so I feel like we should probably make change to make Reedfield more of an accessible space for everybody to be able to play what they want to, and the basketball court is very multipurpose, and you can do, just put anything on a flat surface, so having a tarred flat surface at that area would make a big difference, and I mean, change is bound to happen, and we might as well get going on it now, because if we don't start now, we're not gonna start anytime soon, so, that's all I got.
Thank you Joe. Wow. Shorter than most select meetings. Gotta like that, so, any other comments? I'll go on Zoom? Okay folks, so I think, Jerry, you wanted to wrap up the article a little bit, right? Or, I'd read it once, do you need to say more about that?
No, I think it's really been said by people that what it does and what it does not do, and so I don't feel a need to ope on further.
Okay, I feel a small need. I've tried, I've tried really hard to just listen, because I think that's an important step, and, but I liked a couple of things that some people said, Leslie, I like the idea of starting something that hasn't been seen yet. Sean, I think, you know, you're dead on, nothing comes for free, you know, I gotta tell you that, you know, I try to be like really, well, Tara, my wife, would tell you I'm one of the cheapest humans on the planet, at least in her view, and, but I view the grant-writing money and the planning money as seed money, you can't do anything for absolutely nothing, but the amount of money that you spend on that, compared to what you get out of it, is incredibly small, folks, you know, incredibly small, we got, you gotta do something, right? And I would also just encourage people to look really hard, and we want, I love the comments tonight, I love that there are this many people, that there are this many people this passionate about it, right? And you better believe it's gonna be taken into account, right? Don't stop though, all the meetings are public, keep coming, right? That's how the voices will continue to get heard. But I also really want, as you do that, to keep the idea that, some people have mentioned this, but it's so critical that we view this not as, oh, this fancy pants group came up with this plan and we hate it, but we are all in this together, we are part, we are all part of the community, everybody who worked on this was your neighbors, and everybody who worked in this put in an incredible amount of time, had to overcome a lot of divisions to make it happen, and worked really hard together to make, to get this far, right? Don't lose sight of that, nobody's saying to you, oh, we hate your ideas, right? I think we all need to take that approach. I'm gonna just say one last thing that I think is really important to hear, and that is, I happen to like kids a lot, and I've spent a little bit of time with children, some of whom are no longer children, but still, I'm a giant believer in supporting our youth, done it my whole life, but I also, and not just because I am of my current age, I'm also a giant believer in supporting our elderly folks and other people. The Pollinator Garden, the little one that's right next to the parking lot, if you did that anywhere else, you did that up on top of Suicide Hill, you do that along the driveway down the field, or do it out in the town forest, it's not accessible to a huge number of people, okay? You can't lose sight of that, right? That Pollinator Garden didn't take the place of anything, right now it's a big loam pile, all right? It's incredibly cheap to maintain, it's all just native planting with some signs and a path that people in a wheelchair or mobility issues can get to. That matters, they're all part of our town, okay? Thank you.
I think it's really, really important to stress that this warrant article, number 11 on the town warrant, all it does, it allows us to continue to talk about this.
That's right.
That's all it does. This is by no means final, and that is so important to take away from this meeting, because if it's voted down, the conversation and the planning and the dream ends.
For now.
No, because you guys are talking about it now, when it got voted down last June, so it can still continue to be talked about, it can still continue as many as, even if it's voted down, so that's not true.
We're gonna try.
Can I say one last thing?
Oh, I, I'm, I think you can, Hannah, yes.
I have spent countless hours, countless hours away from my three children, just trying to help any sort of development, and our rec department has grown so much since I started in the rec department, so much, so, that we literally need to pay someone to take care of our rec department, to schedule all the things. Matt LaJoy sitting here beside me organized 11 teams, you guys, 11 teams of baseball schedules, the whole entire team, he's a volunteer, he teaches gym class in three different schools, they are all volunteers, and I understand that we can say, yeah, we're still talking about, we're still talking about it because there is a need. And seven years I've been volunteering my time to run, keep things going, so if you can just take that into account, you can go to vote.
Thank you Hannah, and thanks for those seven years, I know how hard you've worked, appreciate it. Okay, well folks, thanks again for coming, I do believe there's lots of cookies left, and know you cannot bring all those boxes home, Joseph, okay? But, you know, you should all eat, I'm gonna have a hot one. Thank you again, guys, thanks for coming.